Clay Township Planning Commission for May 22nd, 2024 with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Apologize in advance for my voice. So at part times during this meeting, Chris is going to help me with some things, and I'm sure I'll lose my voice if I continue to talk. So I do apologize for that. Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
I'm here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Christopher Daggy.
Here.
Chris Hultunin.
Here.
Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Here.
Robert Muesling here, Wayne Tornow.
Here.
And Kathy Schweikart.
Here. Item number four is approval amendments to the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Second.
We have a motion of support to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hultunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Wayne Tornow.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweikart.
Yes. Item number five is approval of minutes. We have two minutes to approve. The first one would be the minutes from March 27th, 2024, which is 5A.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 27th, 2024 meeting as written. Support.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion?
Who's the support?
Chris Daggy.
Thank you, Chris. Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Abstain.
Mark Burchard.
Abstain.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hultunin.
I abstain.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Abstain.
Go ahead, Sue.
At the last meeting, Mark, we moved to approve them. Now we're not moving to approve them.
Why were you approving them again? That's my question.
Because.
We didn't have a forum.
We didn't have a forum. Didn't have enough people.
Okay.
We didn't have a forum with a number of people that were present for it. It has to be the people who are present during the meeting.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
I approve.
Thank you, Mark. How did that happen?
I was going to say, because I have to abstain.
Could you start the roll call over for that one, please?
Deborah Addy.
Abstain.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hultunin.
I abstain.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Abstain.
Robert Muesling, I abstain. Wayne Tornow.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweikart.
Yes. Thank you. So we'll move on to item 5B, which is the minutes for April 24th for approval.
I'll move to approve the minutes of April 24th.
Support.
We have a motion in supporting. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Abstain.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hultunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Wayne Tornow.
Abstain.
And Kathy Schweikart.
Yes. Thank you. Next is rules for public comment and a public hearing. Chris Hultunin, do you feel you'd like to read those?
Sure.
Thank you.
Public comment rules. All comments must be made through the chairperson. Comments directed to the applicant from the audience are prohibited. Number two, individuals wishing to speak have time limits. Three minutes for each member of the general public and six minutes for a spokesperson of a larger group, i.e. subdivision association, condo association, business group, and a similar group. Number three, anyone wishing to speak is asked to sign the sign and she provided. However, anyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity. Number four, each individual will be allowed to speak once. It will be the chairperson's discretion as to whether rebuttal comments are allowed. Number five, citizens may appoint a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view. And number six, public comments on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item.
Thank you, Chris. Item number six under new business is 6343 Dyke Road Site Plan Consideration. Applicant is proposing a one-story addition to an existing building facing the south property line. The addition would be 320 square feet to accommodate a weight staff prep area and storage.
Just got, our board just got flipped off when he walked in, gave us the bird.
Okay, duly noted. We'll continue forward. I would hope that people would behave in an appropriate manner, but thank you. That's probably not an appropriate manner, and you know it. So there was item number 6A. So Karen.
So the site plan review before us today is for 6343 Dyke Road Club Capri, who is looking to have an addition. As the chairperson said, would be a one-story addition. That would be 320 square feet to accommodate a weight staff prep area and storage. The addition itself meets all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. However, when we do look at a site plan, we do look at other aspects of the site to make sure that it is also in conformance with the ordinance. And there were just three areas that we just want confirmation from, from the applicant. The landscaping for this site in this district needs to be at least 7.5% of the parcel. It appears that's met, but that calculation wasn't provided. So we just would like the applicant to confirm that at least 5.75% of the area will be landscaped. Also, there needs to be a 20-foot-wide green space between the front parking area and the right-of-way. It appears that that may be met. However, a dimension or a width was not given, so we just like the applicant to confirm that in the front. And also, based on the number of parking spaces that's provided, three spaces should be accessible, and on the site plan, only two accessible spaces were noted. But as long as the applicant can confirm that those standards will be met, we do recommend approval of the site plan.
Thank you, Karen. Is the applicant for this project present and/or representative would like to speak? Please come to the podium and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Herb Blackstock. I'm the architect of record for the client. The addition, just as it was stated multiple times, very simple, very small, 320 square feet, one story. When it's all said and done, it'll match the aesthetics of the existing building. So if you've been by there, you're aware of what that looks like. The three items, we have no issue with. I believe the first one was the landscaping, number three on their list. It does exceed that. We have approximately 5,159 square feet of green space, which comes out to about 20%. So we're over that 7.5%. Number six, the distance from the off-street parking to the street, we did verify, and I did add that to our drawing. Unfortunately, you don't have the updated one, but it is 30, let me check my drawing, 30 foot six inches. So we exceed the 20 feet. And the final item we have no problem with that was.
Parkings.
Parking, yeah. It was, I'm sure it was something that was done years ago, and we have no problem adding another space. It'll just be a non-handicapped space that'll be repainted and remarked as an accessible space, and it'll probably be within the same location of the current two that we have.
So the site plan that we have presently has not been updated?
It hasn't been updated. That was the original one that was submitted for this review.
Okay.
We can submit, we'll submit it updated.
Perfect.
For permits. So if it could be approved at that point, that'd be fine.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. I see that we have a letter from our fire chief, George Rose, who had a remark or question asked to number six on the fire department's checklist. The fire exit door that is located in the main dining room east side of the build, of the building is locked. It must remain open during business hours, or panic hardware must be installed.
Did you get that letter?
We never did receive that.
It was dated May 9th.
Okay. We didn't receive.
It's departmental reviews.
That's fine. It just has, actually, if you check the plan, we're proposing another door right near this addition as well, but we'll remedy that.
Okay.
We'll check the door hardware. It wasn't in our scope of work, but we'll check the door hardware, make sure that it's appropriate.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? So Karen, since the site plan that we have present is not updated, any suggestions?
You can, if you want, you can do a conditional approval upon receiving the updated site plan. The commission would like to do so.
Okay. Thank you for that input. Appreciate it. Any discussion amongst the board? Any motions? Any thoughts? Our packet did include all the department head reviews, so we do have everything in regards to that.
Will you be able to gain access from the outside to that addition?
There, there's a, the storage component of it will have its own separate door. So access to that room will be from the outside, but the waitress station will not. It'll be accessible. They're going to put a new door opening into the dining room for that room.
Any other questions, comments? Any thoughts with the board would like to do? We have a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve pending, or.
Conditional.
Conditional with the three components listed in the planner's letter for JPC 2024-003, which is 6343 Dyke Road.
I'll support.
So we have a motion by Mark and support by, was it Skip?
Yeah.
Any discussion regarding the motion?
Can you read it back?
Sure. Sue.
I missed some of it.
Would you restate your motion again, please?
I make a motion to approve the site plan for JPC 2024-003, which is 6343 Dyke Road, Clay Township.
I thought it was a conditional approval.
And with the three conditional items.
Would there be in the fourth one about the doors?
You can add, you can add that in there. We'll address that in our drawing.
So, Mark, try one more time.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. And comply with the fire department's letter dated, uh, May 9th.
May 9th.
May 9th.
There you go. So Sue, can you read the motion back then?
Approve the site plan number JPC 2024, National Res zoning 3 at 6343 Dyke Road. conditional approval pending compliance with the three components listed in the planner's review and comply with the fire chief's letter dated.
Is that your motion, Mark?
Yes, sir. I'll read.
Any support?
I'll support.
Support by Chris. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hultunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Wayne Tornow.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweikart.
Yes. So at this particular point, our site plan is not the updated version.
Correct.
So we would need you to submit the updated version with the four items that were mentioned, and then.
To, to this board or through the department?
Through the building department.
That's fine. Yeah. When we submit for permits, we'll have that, and I'll balloon them so that they can see it.
Then we can do the stamp and take care of it from there.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck with the rebuild or addition. Thank you.
Thank you for the pardon.
All right. We're going to move on to item number seven, which is unfinished business. Item number 7A would be 1629 Mill Street. Applicant is requesting conditional zoning from our one single-family residential to C3 General Business District. The applicant would like to construct a pole banner of the property to conduct a car, vehicular, and boat storage business. So we did close the public hearing when we originally did this. We've had additional information provided to have the whole packet.
I'm sure I'd like to recuse myself.
That's fine.
From this portion.
All right. See you in a little bit. Up to the hallway you go, huh?
Yep.
So who wants to take over his job? Well, all right.
Unless you want to.
No. Okay. No, he should, from our training, should be not present in this room. No. Part of the training that we've been instructed, you should not be present. So that's what we're doing. I would say we have our packet in front of us. Again, because I'm losing my voice, I am going to ask Chris Holcomb to read a document that was submitted to us from Christine Anderson, our township attorney, so it's of record. So I will give you that. It's a little bit long, so everybody be patient.
It's a memo, I believe.
There you go.
From Christine Anderson, Clay Township Attorney, and the subject is the Wayne Eversole proposed conditional rezoning dated April 26, 2024. Pursuant to the request of the Clay Township Planning Commission, we have received and reviewed the proposed second draft of contractual conditional rezoning agreement and conditional rezoning requests submitted by Gary Gendernallak on behalf of Wayne Eversole/H2 Lake Investments LLC. As we discussed, the purpose of this correspondence is to address conditional rezoning in general and the specific provisions of the conditional rezoning proposed on behalf of Wayne Eversole/H2 Investments LLC. Conditional rezoning in general, Section 405 of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, MCL 125.3101 et cetera, quotes the act, provides that an, quote, "An owner of land may voluntarily offer in writing, and the local unit of government may approve certain uses, use or uses, and development of the land as a condition to a rezoning of the land or an amendment to a zoning map," unquote. The purpose of conditional rezoning is for a developer to place restrictions on a parcel that he slash she suggests, seeks, I'm sorry, seeks to rezon in an effort to obtain local approval for the rezoning. The conditions to the rezoning may not violate the terms of the zoning ordinance or any township ordinance, including the building and fire codes. Once a governmental unit, parentheses, township board, approves the rezoning subject to conditions offered by the developer, the parties memorialize the conditions in a conditional zoning, rezoning agreement. Prior to becoming effective, the agreement must be approved by the township board. The, quote, "Privilege to propose a condition rests with the landowner, not the township. The act does not, by its terms, grant any additional powers to the township board or planning commission in connection with rezoning requests that do not currently exist in the act or zoning ordinance. The planning commission is limited to forwarding its recommendation to the township board regarding a conditional rezoning. Neither the planning commission nor the township board may request or propose conditions in exchange for granting the rezoning. To the extent that a landowner voluntarily offers in writing a specific use and development of the land as a condition of rezoning, a written agreement, parentheses, conditional rezoning agreement, will be required between the landowner and the township board. The planning commission does not have the authority to execute any agreements on behalf of the township board. The agreement will be drafted in the form of a covenant, which will be recorded with the St. Clair County Register of Deeds and bind the land. Section 405, parentheses two, permits the township board to establish a time during which the condition shall apply. If the conditions are not satisfied during the prescribed time period, the land shall revert to its prior zoning classification. Section 405, parentheses three, prohibits the township board from adding to or altering the conditions offered by the landowner during the time period. Conditional rezoning agreement, Eversole. The planning commission does not need and should not concern itself with the terms of the proposed conditional rezoning agreement submitted by Gary Gendernallak, except for the conditions offered by the property owner with respect to requested rezoning. Prior to taking any action on the conditional rezoning request, the planning commission should make sure that it is clear on every single condition the property owner is submitting with respect to the rezoning request, remembering that the conditions may not violate the zoning ordinance. My review of the proposed conditional rezoning agreement and my understanding of the property owner's request is that the request is conditioned upon a number of uses not being allowed to be constructed upon the property. Absent from the list set forth in Section 2A is automobile, RV, boat, truck, and agricultural equipment, sales, service, and storage. Moreover, Section 2C15 of the conditional rezoning agreement prohibits mini-storage or mini-warehouse facilities, except as provided for and set forth in this conditional rezoning in the attached exhibits. Section 15.03 of the Clay Township zoning ordinance specifically provides that mini-storage or mini-warehouse facilities are special land uses within the C3 General Business District. The conditional rezoning agreement may not permit a special land use as a matter of right without the property owner seeking special land use approval from the planning commission. In short, the provision which permits the property owner to construct a mini-storage or mini-warehouse facility in the C3 district without special land use approval violates zoning ordinance and is unenforceable. The proposed exhibits depicting mini-storage or mini-warehouse facilities are not binding nor appropriate as the township cannot grant special land use approval within the context of a conditional rezoning. The planning commission may not recommend, and the township board may not approve, a special land use as one of the conditions of a conditional rezoning. It is also worth noting that if a proposed condition of a rezoning is approved of a specific use and a specific site plan, that site plan must be provided by, I'm sorry, must be provided to the township and undergo a full site plan review by department heads and consultants prior to such site plan being approved as a condition of a conditional rezoning. The agreement may not be, quote, "in lieu of site plan approval to the planning commission," unquote, but may constitute site plan approval by the planning commission if all consultants and department heads have conducted a full site plan review, and if the planning commission is satisfied that the proposed site plan complies with all Clay Township zoning ordinance requirements. The property owner will be required to comply with all township ordinance requirements with respect to development of the parcel, including but not limiting to, limited to, all building and fire code provisions.
Thank you, Chris. I would also like to acknowledge for the record that this board received through the building department a correspondence dated April 23rd, 2024, from the attorney, Gary Gendernallak, regarding, this one was addressed to, looks like Amber, regarding the minutes. So we want to acknowledge that we received that one. We also want to acknowledge that on the same date, there was one that was supposed to be circulated, which isn't contained, which is contained in our packet regarding the minutes that have been typed up as far as this particular project in regards to comments made by Jason Wassel. Our minutes are not verbatim. The only thing will be verbatim is the motions. So therefore, we'll acknowledge receipt of both of these, but we will not, at this point, be changing anything in regards to our minutes. If the applicant or the applicant's attorney would like to come forward and speak on any more topics, that'd be great.
Sure.
I sympathize with your vote. Last week, one day, I had a similar for like a day and a half, and then it got better.
I don't know if it's cold or if it's allergies. I'm not sure what's going on, but.
Yeah, I did get a copy of Chris's memo letter, and the, so you have to make a recommendation to the township board. We're asking that you make a recommendation for this conditional rezoning. In the second draft of our proposal, what Chris was basically talking about was in Section B on page two, where it says, "This agreement shall be in lieu of site plan approval through the planning commission." So in essence, she says that sentence should not be in there, and we're willing to take that out because procedurally, what she is saying is, it goes to the planning commission on the conditional rezoning, then it goes on the recommendation to the township board. Township board takes some action one way or the other. If they approve it, then we would submit a special approval land use because the mini-storage in essence is a special approval land use in the B3 district, and that's what Chris is saying. And so we'd go through that special approval land use, site plan approval, and hopefully get that site plan approved. And the building would be similar to what we've shown you in the past, and the survey and the layout of where it would be on the property. And at one of the prior meetings, there was a comment like with reference to a non-conforming use. The property at issue is separate and distinct from the other piece, and what's transpired with the other piece has nothing in essence to do with this request. We're only requesting conditional rezoning of this eight-plus-acre piece. So we would, we are willing to strike that part from the agreement. We would pass that revised document on to the township board for their consideration when it comes up on their agenda.
Any questions?
And so in our conditional rezoning request in the document, the draft, we're basically saying that the only thing that could be put on this piece of property is the proposed mini-storage facility. None of the other permitted uses in the C3 district or the other special land use would be up for consideration.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Go right ahead.
How is access gained to 1623 Mill Street? It appears to be landlocked. Must cross 1629 in order to gain access to it.
So this is the area that shows the outline of the piece in question?
Correct.
That's how you get in? You get into this piece right here?
Through the road that's on 1629.
Right.
So it is.
And the same property owner owns both.
It's a corporation that owns one, and a private individual owns the other. So it is two separate owners.
But they're related entities. So we can always give them a red easement?
But is there, there isn't an easement? I couldn't find one. Is there?
Though I don't think there's a recorded easement, but we would put one in place.
So that property, in order to get to the other, to the business, which we're saying is separate, you do have to cross that property?
Correct.
Do trucks and things go through there? Semis and that kind of thing?
I don't know. Do semis go across the property?
Lots of them, maybe.
Okay, so you do have vehicles going through.
I have a question.
Yes, by way of the, I showed you that area, but here, this was submitted. This is the survey. So this is the line with the frontage for the piece at issue, and then this is where the driveway is.
Correct. So it is access. Yep. So that you have to, it's not completely separate because you do have to run, to run their business, they do have to traverse across this one that we're saying is independent of that other business. So it's not quite independent of it.
Well, it's independent in the sense that there's a deed and legal description for this piece and a separate deed and legal description.
No, I agree there. I know.
And if people own through their entities or individually, and they agree to driveway access, it's not.
No, just for clarification, the house that's there, is that rented out? Is that an office? Is that a rental? Is that icon or occupied?
Yeah, it's rented out, and in the conditional rezoning agreement draft that we had set, we said that that house was there, that it would be occupied and could continue to be rented.
So it is, it is a rental at this point?
Correct.
Debbie, did you have a question?
Yes. I don't quite know how to formulate it. If this property gets sold, these requirements go with the land?
Correct, and that's in the conditional rezoning agreement. Because it will be recorded, because the document says that it would be recorded with the St. Clair County Register of Deeds. My client would obviously have a copy, and we would provide a recorded copy to the township for their records, which is the normal process in a conditional rezoning. Because. Because the Township Supervisor would sign it after authorization from the Township Board.
There's a clause on land-locking property. You can't land-lock property without providing access. How does that fit into this parcel?
Well, if the Township wanted us to put a written easement in place to get to the existing business through the backside, we would do that. The property where the existing business is and this acreage are, have separate legal descriptions, meetings and bounds, and have tax ID numbers, and I don't think they're landlocked. Because people have access to them. You can have access through an easement even though it's not recorded. But for future property owners, we'd put something in place.
Any other?
I've got a question. Have you already started storing boats and things over around this property? So I went over and took a look at it with one of the neighbors there. I mean, it looked to me like all kinds of stuff was getting moved back there, and there were semi-trailer storage things back in, dumpsters.
That's on 1623.
Okay.
Not the 29.
Okay. I mean, just to comment frankly, it wasn't very attractive, and I personally would not want it in my backyard.
I have a question for maybe Karen or clarification, but this isn't, this isn't a one-step process, reading or trying to understand what Christine said. The first portion would be to, to recommend rezoning or for this, this board to recommend rezoning, and then the applicant would have to come back for special land use approval?
Right, so what the applicant's representative has now stated is that they are removing the condition that it could be approved upon the Planning Commission's approval of the rezoning, the business use. They're retracting that, and so it sounds, unless the representative wants to correct me, that they are just requesting for the rezoning, and the condition of that rezoning is this property is zone C-3. The only C-3 use that could possibly be allowed would be the storage use. But in order for them to get that full storage use, they would still have to come back to the, if the rezoning got approved, they would have to come back to the Planning Commission for the special land use approval. If, for whatever reason, the special land use approval does not get approved, then the property would revert back to its current zone right now. If it did get approved, then you can look forward with the storage business.
Okay, so we're still talking about a two-step process essentially?
Correct.
Our, our duty tonight would be either to recommend or not recommend to the Township Board to rezone that property to C-3.
I thought it was to look at the agreement, the conditional agreement.
No, that's up to the, we give you that so that you have information as to what our proposal is. Then it goes from your Planning Commission to the Township Board, and the Township Board and the Township Attorney, and the planner would review it. As I indicated, we would strike that one sentence. So as Chris indicated, if the Township Board approved the conditional rezoning and the conditional rezoning agreement, it's executed, recorded, then we have to come back to the Planning Commission for site plan approval and the special approval land use for the intended mini-storage facility.
So for tonight's purpose, we, we are only looking at the recommendation of rezoning?
Now that we've got additional information again, this, this was not the way it was originally presented to us by any means. And we all have Christine Anderson's memo. Our planner has the memo, and your question to Karen probably has now clarified really at this particular point, correct or suffer wrong, Karen, we only have one thing to decide tonight at this point.
If you're going to rezon at C-3 with the condition that it would just be for the storage use.
And it would be a recommendation only?
So in our recommendation, we would, we would state that fact that it would only be, it would only be rezoned for a conditional rezoning that doesn't exist yet?
Right.
Well, it would be, the conditional rezoning would be just for the storage use. It'd just be limited to that. In theory, if it's just rezoned to C-3, it could be any, all the permitted or special land uses in C-3. So that is the one condition. It's still a conditional rezoning as opposed to just a regular rezoning.
Understood.
All right, Tom.
I just look for spot zoning, just watching out for that, right?
That's exactly what it is.
Exactly what it is.
Karen, do you have anything further to add? Because we've got your written report or memo, and now we have some different information at this point. We do have some, we do have some department head information, but it truly sounds like we're in a rezoning question versus anything else at this particular point.
I don't have any new information.
Is there any plans to change that strip into going from R1 over to commercial?
Over on the west side, it was a condition that the west side of our street, they have more commercial. You know, the original master plan didn't have that C-3 designation going all the way over to this property. It is closed, so.
Still multiple residential properties away, though.
All right. Questions, thoughts from either planner or applicant's representative? Any additional thoughts, if you need, from Karen, Christine Anderson, Christine Anderson?
Just looks like spot rezoning to me. I'm sorry, Mark.
All right, to be sorry. Discuss what's happening. Tom, any further?
No, let's see if I can make a motion and see what happens.
That's fair enough.
Probably not going to like it, but I make a motion to send the conditional rezoning to C-3 under a condition that it's only mini-storage.
So right now, the current zoning, cut me if I'm wrong, is R1, right?
It's R1, from R1 to C-3 with the condition that it can only be used as a mini-storage.
Sure.
May I clarify, recommending approval to the Township Board?
It's recommendation.
Yes.
Yes.
Should we add in there the size of the whole back, so it doesn't cover?
We'll just say as, as described in the case in planning review for 1629 Mill Street.
I didn't get that last.
1629 Mill Street.
So do you want to read back what the motion is at present, so?
Recommend approval to the Township Board, conditional rezoning for mini-storage from R1 to C-3 with the condition it's used as mini-storage as described in the planner's review for 1629 Mill Street.
Karen, is that motion at this particular point, what this board is supposed to be looking at, just the rezoning?
The rezoning and the condition specified by the applicant, so maybe in understanding that that condition is a special land use.
Okay.
So.
Not so much a mini-storage, a special land.
Special be approved or?
Special land use approval?
That would require, maybe adding language that says that would require a special land use approval process. So recognizing that there's that extra step they would have to go through.
Because the request right now, well, in the future is for a mini-storage. Try one more time, if you're willing to amend your motion.
Okay, I'll see if I can amend this motion here. Recommend approval for special, to send to the Board for special land use approval as a mini-storage as presented by the Case and Planning Group for 1629 Mill Street from R1 to C-3.
Yes, it's a recommendation. Go ahead.
Is there more than someone to me when he was recommending approval?
This is not, yeah. Hold on, hold on.
Thinking of language along the lines of, if you wanted to approve it, approving the conditional rezoning request from R1 to C-3 with the condition of limiting potential C-3s to, to the mini-storage, which will need special land use approval.
It's like a pretzel.
Very much is.
Somebody else want to give it a try?
I think you need to recognize that it's conditional rezoning and that the condition is limiting with the uses, and that use also needs to go through the special land process.
Those are the three main, and it's just the motion potentially. So far, we just have your motion, we really don't have any support, so. About, I'm going to say this, we hear Tom's motion, do we have anybody who has a second on that one? We don't have that. Anybody else want to try to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we recommend that the Township Board denies the rezoning for 1629 Mill Street from R1 to C-3.
Support.
Support.
So we have, Chris. So Sue, you want to read that motion back?
I went to the Township Board to deny the rezoning for 1629 Mill Street from R1 to C-3.
That was made by Chris Hiltonan and supported by Chris Daggie. Any discussion? Hearing none. Chris, roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Porshard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hiltonan.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb, yes. Tom Cozel.
No.
Robert Muesling, Robert Muesling.
Recused, recused, yes.
Wayne Tornal.
Yes.
And Kathy Schrecker.
Yes. We'll get another sheet, okay. Motion's been approved. So that takes care of our Item 7A.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, go right ahead.
Would you know when this would be on the Board's agenda?
I do not have an answer for that. I would say contact Cindy Valentine, and she should be able to let you know when it would be on the Board's agenda, okay?
Very good.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Thank you for suffering through our questions, and this is not a normal item that comes before us like this, but thank you so much for all your information and help. All right, I'm going to move on to the Item 7B, which happens to be a motion clarification for special land use of 9735 Pearl Beach Boulevard, which was the Gabriel we refer to property. We had a motion that was made by Mark Porshard and seconded by, thank you, he's back. I should recognize that Robert Muesling still returned at eight, or 7:45, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So the original motion was made by Mark, seconded by Christine Holcomb, and it was an approved motion. It has come to our attention that the original motion we, was made is a recommendation, and for special land use, it's not a recommendation. It's, it relies, it lies in this Board's approval. We don't need, other than to FYI the Board of Trustees. So according to our Township Attorney, we need to correct mistake that we made on that particular item. So that's my brief synopsis. Karen, are you familiar with this?
Steve told me.
Okay, so anything I misstated or do you want to add to?
Nope.
Okay, so that's, do the Board members have any questions? Hearing none, then we would need a, a motion.
So it's got to be without the recommendation?
Right, that's strictly, it doesn't have.
Can I move to approve the special land use, what's a conditional use permit for marine construction under ORD 16.027 for 9735 Pearl Beach Boulevard?
Support.
So we have an motion and support. Any other comments? Karen, did we maybe do it right this time? Okay, sorry about that. All right, so we have a motion to support. Sue, you're, hey, over there. All right, roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Porshard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
No.
Chris Hiltonan.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Wayne Tornal.
Yes.
And Kathy Schrecker.
Yes, so we've already signed the site plans at the last meeting, so everything should be in the Building Department, and also the applicant at the time has a copy of the site plans, and we should be all set with that one.
That was made by Tom and seconded by who?
It was made by Tom.
By Mark.
Mark.
Okay. All set. Moving on to Item 8, which is Planning Consultant Report.
I have no news to update you guys with.
All right, thank you, Karen. Item number nine is EBA Representative's Report.
I had one item that came in for Anchorage Drive. There was two platted pieces of properties, the canal side and bayside. The neighboring, it's basically vacant, but it is under one tax ID, front and back. The neighboring, it's been bought, and they want to just, they want it just, the bayside, they want it to just go 50/50 basically and split it, but then they had another person that was going to, Mr. Andrews has been here before, to take the canal side, and because it's under one tax ID at this point, it had to go before zoning, and zoning would not allow it to proceed.
That's it, thank you. Well, I appreciate that. Item number 10 is Board Representatives' Report, which would be Mark.
Yeah, nothing to report.
Okay. Item number 11 is Chairperson's Report. I really don't have anything to report, and we will save in my voice, I'm not going to say much, so. I'm going to thank you everybody for showing up, welcome back, Debbie.
Thank you.
It's been a while, so thank you for returning.
Good to see you.
Yes, good to see you. Item number 12 is Planning Commission Member Comments. Planning Commission Members would like to make a comment?
I do.
Sure.
Someone walks in here and gives a member of Bird disrespectful, Chairperson doesn't do anything about it, I just think that's really unacceptable behavior for someone to come into here and be that disrespectful.
Well, I would say this, I did address your concern, noted it for the record, and said that that is not an appropriate behavior to be done in this particular, any meeting for, for that reason, and please do not continue with that. So that's what I said.
Could have asked the person to leave.
I could have, but I did not believe at this particular point that was necessary, because at this particular point, I've not seen and or heard any additional disrespectfulness towards you, nor have you brought anything to my attention in regards to that, nor any other Board member. If that would have continued, yes, I would have asked the particular person to be, to remove themselves voluntarily, and if not, we've had other people removed, unfortunately, with police escort, so that's the avenue I took. You don't have to agree with me, but that's what I took, so, there you go. But thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Any other Board members would like to say anything? Any other Board members would like to say anything?
I'd like to wish everybody a happy Memorial Weekend, make it a safe one. Coming up on the island, I can tell you, we have a road rally sponsored by SS Downtown Inc. on June 8th. That's the first road rally, I believe that's ever been done on the island. So if you're interested, it's on their website, there is a flyer in the back in the hallway of the Township Hall meeting, of the Township Hall. If you have any questions, reach out to them. And I believe there's a Trump to Trump coming up at Brownsfield sometime shortly in June and the Cattails will be hosting their Blooming Boutique luncheon at the old club on June the 4th. And that's all I got.
And I would mention that we had Dancing in the Streets this past Saturday that Mr. Bryson and Cindy Babish from Sparks and Rocks put together and it was a very successful event in years, so hopefully everybody, if you got to join it at the time or not. Any other planning members have comments? Nothing else? Item number 13 is Public Comments. If anybody in the public would like to make any comments, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address. I'm not seeing anybody do so. I would also like to recognize that Gary from the Building Department is here. Thank you very much for attending. Uh, thank you. And at this particular point, item number 14 would be an adjournment.
We'll make a motion to adjourn.
So we have a motion with second.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed?
You're excused now.